I hereby call to order this special, this committee of the whole meeting. It is Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is eight oh one AM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzicca.
Here.
Lisa Schneider Fives. Erin Stone.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, special and committee of the whole and executive session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, special meeting and committee of the whole and executive meeting minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzicca.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll continue with our agenda, uh, starting with Facility Development Committee. Mr. Panzicca.
Okay, good morning. Um, the two items today, the first one on asbestos, I believe we have a vote on. Yes. Um, so I'll hand that off to, uh, the moderator.
Corey.
Corey?
All right. Good morning. So we, last Monday, we had the bid opening for the Harper asbestos abatement project. Um, there were five companies that had attended the mandatory pre-bid walkthrough. We received bids from four of those five. And we had some competitive bidding and the low bidder was DEM Services Incorporated at ninety-seven thousand. Um, MKA Environmental Consulting helps the district, uh, prepare bid specs and manages these projects. They confirmed with DEM the scope and timeline and everything else, the price. And so we're good to go with DEM. Um, DEM has done work with the district in the past and MK has worked with them quite a bit. So we're, overall, we're quite pleased with, uh, the bid results and we're just meeting last for board approval. Um, just for reference, the project is broken into two parts. Uh, roughly a third or maybe forty percent of the project will happen during spring break week, um, down in the crawl space and, uh, in the ceiling of the cafeteria. And then the remainder of the crawl space at Harper will get taken care of the first two to three weeks after school is let out. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I can't remember why we were doing this. Was it bathrooms or something?
Uh, so the asbestos abatement, it's all the insulation wrapped around the old piping that's getting removed. And when they pull it off, all the insulation is, has what they call friable asbestos, which means it goes airborne. So when they're doing this, whatever section they're working on will be, um, completely plast- like sealed off. Um, the, the workers will basically be in like hazmat suits. Everything's completely controlled and then they do many rounds of, um, testing the air afterwards to make sure they've got everything. So that, that's the reason. The, um, quite frankly, the, um, mechanical companies, they wouldn't touch any of this without it.
And then is it, it's a prelude to another project, right?
Yes, yeah. Then it, so like having all of this insulation and asbestos materials taken away allows the, um, boiler and piping replacement package to receive this summer.
Thank you.
From a procedural standpoint, it exceeds, uh, fifty thousand, so it requires.
That is correct.
Sure. Any, I, well, I'd say it one more, just, I don't know if you can even answer, but do you have any rolling number of what percentage of asbestos in our schools had been abated in past projects? You know, where we are on the spectrum? Yeah, I understand if, uh, anywhere near accurate, but it's.
Okay, so, yeah, so certainly in some schools, uh, a, a large, as I've gone through it, part of our planning process for what we'll present in May, it's related to kind of longer term facilities plan. There are certainly schools that over the last twenty-plus years have had very large amounts of asbestos removed. And there are some that still have a little bit. I don't have my school off the top of my head, but as we present those projects, I would be certain to point out which ones, um, would have it. I already know that if we were to try and tackle similar projects at other schools, some of them, most of it is already gone. There's a couple of them that would probably see a similar amount of being.
Okay, do you think we have fifty percent left or?
I would say probably fifty or maybe slightly less could be mine.
Okay, that, that's fine. I didn't expect an exact answer by any means, but just kind of to have a rolling ballpark coming. Uh, anybody else have any other questions on the asbestos part that we'll vote on later today then? All right. And then, then the, uh, update on the, uh, flooring project.
Yep. So as part of our beginning process for some of our smaller summer projects, one of the needs that we identified was a need to do a bid for flooring work at, at High Crest. Um, we're in the process of getting ready to send that out. The reason we're doing the, as Frank just mentioned, one of the reasons that we're doing a bid is because the amount of work will, will certainly exceed fifty thousand. Um, and then the reason we're trying to tackle a large amount this summer is when we look forward over the next couple of summers. Um, if we don't tackle the amount we're going to do now, it may have to wait two or three summers with some of the other projects that are likely to happen either at High Crest and or the Junior High. And then we factor in how we use our buildings during the summer. Um, right now presents an opportunity to tackle something that's needed. If I were to guess, the cost will probably be range between, say, a hundred and fifty to two, two hundred twenty-five or maybe two hundred two thousand. Um, we're still ironing out the exact scope, but, um, that's kind of the range that we're targeting right now. Now it all take place over the summer.
So which, um, which floors?
Um, so right now we're looking at, it would be, if you were to look at a, a map of the building, it would be most of the classrooms on the southern or southwest wing, um, the kitchen and cafeteria area. Then there's probably five to six classrooms up on the second floor that would be included in this. And then some hallway, uh, flooring in that same southern and southwest corridor of the building.
Um, and when you deal with the floors, is there any chance that you'll be exposing asbestos in the sand or?
So we've already, you know, we've already looked into, um, one of the nice things of why we're able to tackle such a large amount of flooring at High Crest this summer is in, in reviewing the, the project with, um, MK, uh, who, who's worked with the district for well over twenty years. Fortunately, there is no asbestos, um, within, within, uh, this group of rooms or, or spaces.
Great. Um, I just had, anybody else on that topic? I just had, um, one, one more, um, I don't know if it's, well, whatever. The, um, the six hundred thousand that we kind of allocate for these types of projects was a number that we had seven, eight years ago. And we didn't spend it directly for a large number of years because we redirected at least some of it to some of the large capital projects. But, um, I was wondering if, if there's any thought to whether the six hundred thousand dollar number is, should be a little bit higher? Um, you know, because it is a kind of a, a plug number into our budgets that allows us to do these type of projects. And if six hundred was the right number ten years ago, um, you know, if you had a recommendation that that doesn't give us as much flexibility as it should, um, you should consider, not huge increase in that, but, but right sizing that, you know, given that we haven't looked at that in a long time.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something I'll, we'll be considering. Um, I think any change to that would probably be folded into our presentation in May on this topic. Um, I think certainly six hundred grand doesn't buy anywhere near what it did a decade ago. But I think the one thing to consider is even if we were to increase it, as long as we're tackling some of our larger construction projects and we have the same types of summer building use that we see where our internal programming are using two different buildings, the Parker district is using at least two buildings. Um, even if we were to bump that up from say six hundred to a million, probably the biggest challenge to us is we're just limited in what we're able to do, whether it's large or small. So as I kind of plan out over the next five years, much like with this High Crest, right, we saw an opportunity where, yeah, we could have done a smaller amount of flooring this summer. However, if we had taken that path, we may not have been able to address other areas of the building that needed, needed attention for maybe another three years, uh, given, given some of the larger things. I will, uh, incorporate whether six hundred in any of these given next, say, next two to three years is appropriate, or whether we need to revisit that and possibly look at jumping up, you know, seven or eight hundred or nine, or whatever. Um, I think it's definitely something to keep an eye on and be of consideration.
Okay, that, I, I know it did have to hit the right part of the budget cycle and wouldn't want it to pump up, you know, too much, especially if it can't be used well. But it does have a purpose of, of locking it into the budget. So there's less, you know, like this year we needed eight hundred thousand, but we only get six hundred locked in, then you have a two hundred thousand on the whole. Um, so there's some value to having it right size, not too large, but be right size. So just something for your consideration as you move through your, your budget process. Anybody else had anything for facilities? Okay, I'll hand it back to.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move to finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Paling. Um, just going back to, um, Corey. So we have two items, the amended budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and then it looks like a transportation contract.
Yes, thank you. All right. So the first item is amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, uh, budget. Um, just to remind everyone, the reason that we're recommending to go ahead and amend the budget in a formal process is due to the issuance of the debt certificates. If you hadn't gone through with that, there, from my perspective, there wouldn't be a need. So I just wanted to review the changes real quickly and then kind of share a timeline. So we'll kind of share the changes and timeline today. The next Monday evening, we will present the tentative amended budget at the board meeting. We'll set a public hearing date on the amended budget. The following day, we'll make the budget available for viewing here at the MECC and we can also post it on our website. Then a few days later, on March twenty-fourth, we'll publish an added in newspaper stating the date, time, and location of the public hearing, similar to what we do for the original budget process. And then at the April twenty-fifth board meeting, we'll hold the public hearing on the amended budget. And then we would ask the board to approve the amended budget. And similar to the original budget, we would then file the board approved version for the state board. So this, this one-page document just shows a summary of changes. As I had mentioned a few months ago, that as we issued that certificates, we would likely need to, um, do an amended budget. And I agree with the board's direction to limit the changes in the budget to just this issuance. And so the nice thing is, is that all of our operating fund budget amounts will stay exactly the same from our originals, so there won't be any deviations. The changes you see here are limited to our capital projects fund and our debt service fund. Those are considered non-operating funds. And so as you think about like, what is our focus when we talk about budgeting? You know, we've always kind of focused on that, operating funds, what is the percentage of expenditure fund balance? And, you know, does the operating funds have a surplus or deficit? These changes do not impact that. Is there more of one time or things that are outside of that scope? So on this list, we have the principal and premium from the, that's, the debt certificates that were issued. The district realized roughly six point five million in new money from the, from the issuance. Um, the, there were some of the premium was placed into the debt service fund. That was capitalized interest to help pay off, um, future repayment for interest. You see a line item for the cost of issuance, which was bond counsel, legal counsel, Raymond James fee, and some of the other financial services included in that. And since we were going through the capital projects, I adjusted the purchase service and capital outlay lines. Now that we've gone through the bidding process and I have a, a little bit better idea of estimating what might get expended, um, by June thirtieth. It's always a little bit of a guesswork, but, um, the changes in those bottom two lines is probably a little more conservative, uh, perspective on it. But since we were going through the process, we included those as well. Um, so those six items represent the entire, um, summary of changes from original budget to amended budget. Are there any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
And I mean, I think we appreciate you summarizing the change. I've always found, uh, Illinois State, uh, what do we call this?
Oh, yeah, the other pages that I included.
Yeah, to be.
That is even for me.
Byzantine.
Yeah, even for me, that's not a, uh, not very much of a useful document. I understand why, it's just a, it's in a huge Excel sheet with probably, I don't know, twenty tabs. I understand why they do it because it's easy to aggregate the non-plus districts, but from our perspective or the board, you know, not so much.
And there's always fund accounting, which.
True.
Does anybody have any thoughts, questions on this? Corey, uh, seeing the, you know, the document that appears, I hope you can get it, you know, this, this analysis, the Illinois State Board of Education, uh, budget form. I think you can get that online.
Yes.
Right, and then compare. Um, I, I've always, I've been annoyed with this document because it, it doesn't show any like ratios analysis or anything like that. I think we do stuff like that though, to make our budget more transparent. So where do we find it though? I, I know it, I think it's in our, our former meetings. If you go back and you look, if you want to know.
Yeah, we, for like our, for our typical budget process, we have, um, we use the Forecast Five documents, which has more ratios and percentages. Has more historical data than the state form. Hence like when we're, most of the time, least internally, when we're looking at stuff, but, um, it becomes a lot more useful, whether I'm looking at actual data or kind of budget or forecasting. But yeah, that, that is also, has been incorporated when we do our original budget as well.
So we'd, we'd go, if we were constituents, we'd go back into the meetings of November, I guess.
Yeah, um, well, we approved the budget for August. So the August would have had the original budget in like a, in a different format as well as that cumbersome state budget. All right. So then the next topic is, I just wanted to very briefly mention, um, so our regular transportation contract with North Shore. We are ending, at the end of the school year, we will be ending that, um, existing contract. We are currently, uh, negotiating with them. We, we just started, I don't have anything specific to share just yet, but I did want to make the board aware that, um, we are trying to work on a one-year extension. And if we're able to come to an agreement, we would bring that back to the board, um, potentially as soon as, depending upon how quickly things move, potentially as soon as next Monday. Um, but we have, have started that process, so it'll just depend on how quickly we get through that. So I just wanted to make the board aware that, um, that is something that, when we extend it, that does require board approval. And we are in a situation where we can extend one year at a time. Have you had any question, any questions?
Any thoughts, questions, yeah?
When we, um, were doing the first of many rounds of COVID mitigation, we were dealing a lot with the, the transportation bus company. And I know we were looking at things to make sure that they had enough people, that they retained people, um, that we weren't going to be out of bus drivers, et cetera. How did they do on that? Do we think that, um, our working with them got us to a good place, um, that they worked with as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think if, if I were to reflect back to the, to the summer of twenty, when I, when I came here, and if someone had said, you know, we, we had talked a lot about staffing and how, how do we open schools back up? Part of that was the busing. Uh, you know, off the top of my head, we haven't had any situations where we've had a high scale, or even, even the smaller amounts, like just a couple of buses. We haven't had to like say sorry, buses aren't running today because they don't have drivers. That's the one thing, as I've talked with our transportation liaison about it, over the last almost two years now, is that was a concern and I'm not sure I would have believed it. We've now made it nearly two years and we haven't had to let families know last minute, sorry, North Shore didn't have any drivers available today, or they, you know, had fifty percent call in sick and they weren't able to. I'm sure internally, they're a large, there's a large organization. I'm sure internally, they've had days that were challenging, but they're so large that they're able to pull from their areas. And we haven't seen that. I know that's not the case for everybody. Um, just in talking with peers throughout the Chicago area, there are many districts that have had last minute to tell their families, sorry, your kid is either going to show up ninety minutes late to school or you have to drop him off. So we've been fortunate. And I, I think that is one area that's been as long very long.
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't call it fortunate. I mean, you did a lot of work with them to, to make that happen, but certainly the results have been fortunate. Um, I, I just had one other anecdotal thing. I know three or five years ago, two or three times a year, there'd be an item brought to the school board of some bus issues, so something. And, and over the last two years, which normal, have not been normal, but still over the last two years, we haven't had those. So I think that's a good sign also.
I'll, I'll add, I think that's a tribute to Corey and, and Michelle's work with the bus departments, the, the service providers. Also, our principals and assistant principals work really closely with them. Um, when an issue arises and works with families and students to try to address those as far as possible. So I think it's a, it's definitely a team effort. And I think, um, acknowledgement that staffing has been really difficult across the board. I'm not sure he's done a, a good job. We'll, we'll have to see where we can get with the contract. But it's, those costs are increasing pretty dramatically in, in many ways due to gas prices and personnel, um, salary costs in order to keep people employed. So, um, it, it certainly hasn't been easily thrown. What people are gonna, thank you.
Erin, did you have a, something you wanted to add? No? Yeah, Carrie, Carrie preempted my question, which is, should we, what should we prepare for as far as the cost increases? Double.
It's a little, uh, like I said, we're just starting, we haven't quite got that far yet. So we'll, uh, I, I would suggest that it's not going to be what we've historically seen.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
It's not going to be what we've historically seen.
Oh, sure.
You know.
Fair. All right, well, that's all for.
Hey.
Finance.
Great, thank you. So, uh, in Lisa's absence, I can start with strategy and I'm turning that right over for our discussion about the student support services thing.
Thank you. Uh, we're really pleased to, uh, bring this topic back to the board. Um, we had Atlantic Research Partners conduct an audit, um, of our services and they spent quite a bit of time talking to our staff, our administrators, our parents, um, observing within our schools and reviewing a lot of records. Uh, Kristin Swanson has been integral in, in helping to lead this effort and lead the follow-up steps as well. So we're really, um, here today to talk to the board a little bit about some of those follow-up steps. Um, again, in the last two months, uh, there's been a lot of work accomplished in reviewing, uh, the suggestions and recommendations of ARP. Uh, we also have attorney Dana Crumley here with us because the board had some follow-up questions regarding some of the legal aspects that were, um, offered within the, the findings and recommendations. So we wanted to make sure that not only Kristin was here to answer those questions, but that Dana could also, um, address it from more of a legal standpoint. Um, so Kristin has put together a couple of documents and shared those with the board, but I will let, um, her take over and, uh, share with the board some of the findings and really, um, action steps and, and planning that has taken place in the last two months. Kristin?
Thank you very much. Um, so yeah, let me start with just a reminder about the process. We started this process several years ago and we, we did a RFP and had multiple companies come in and, and sort of share what they would do. We were looking for information about our special education programming. Uh, we, we know that we have a very strong program here in Well Matt, but we also know that there's always room for improvement. And so we wanted to get somebody to come in and sort of take a look at everything. Uh, they did come in the spring two years ago and literally the day they were here doing onsite interviews was the day that we announced we were shutting down the next day. So we delayed, um, the rest of the evaluation process and the, the analysis and review until this fall. And they were able to come back onsite, do interviews and observations in all of our buildings. Um, we asked them to try and keep it as far away from COVID as we could, but we all know that, um, COVID has permeated everything that has happened over the past two years. So we do definitely have, um, recommendations and things that are also a result of that. They finished their, their initial reports and presentation. They did a presentation for all of the special education staff in January, as well as for the board, um, at a special meeting. We have then took the information, the, um, the recommendations that they had and we worked with the district administrators to come up with sort of themes that were district-wide, as well as how those impacted the buildings in, in each building. During Institute Day, we had some further discussion with special education staff. Our buildings met with their special education teams in each building to sort of talk about how this would impact their building, what things they needed to work on as an individual building. Um, one of the, the record, or one of the things that I felt we should do after reading through the, the recommendations and, and listening to their presentation, was to develop a steering committee that is made up of, um, our department chairs for our related services, as well as LBS representatives from multiple buildings. And so we, we asked for applications. We have that committee. We met a couple of weeks ago to sort of go through and start to talk about some of the recommendations. The goal is to use that committee to prioritize and then provide feedback as we move through different changes that we're going to be making. So it's, it's going to be an ongoing committee that is going to be really advisory in nature. They're going to review what we're doing. They're going to make recommendations about where to go next and provide feedback. So I'm going to go through today and just kind of talk a little bit about, um, you all heard, I think, two hours worth of, of information from Atlantic Research Partners. But when we really dug into it and looked at it, it came out to a variety of themes that were sort of district-wide and things that we could really, um, narrow down our, our action planning around. So those themes were really around staffing, MTSS, the continuum of services that we have here in the district, the roles and responsibilities of our personnel, um, special education eligibility process, professional development and training, as well as communication, parent education and transition. So I'm going to just touch on each of these and kind of talk about where we are with our action planning related to that. Um, for staffing, they did recommend that we increase our student services coordinators and we are, um, going to be adding two student services coordinators. Their, their jobs will be to support our LBSs and other special education staff. Um, they're going to serve as a liaison between building administrators and, and staff, as well as district administration and staff. They will be, um, either split or solely at a building in order to provide that ongoing support as well as professional development, that job, embedded professional development, and working with our parent professionals as well. So they'll be there, they'll get to know the schools and the students. Um, they also recommended adding behavior specialists. We have had behavior specialists in the past. Over the past couple of years, it's been extremely hard to hire due to COVID, but we are, we are, um, on board with that recommendation and working now to recruit and hire. So that is another area that we are definitely looking at. Um, they had some recommendations regarding MTSS. We do have an MTSS committee that is right now, we're fining the District Thirty-nine process. We have three subcommittees that are addressing academic behavior and social emotional. And the committee's been meeting regularly this year. We have a lot of, a lot going on and the plan is to have, um, the, a, a more refined and visual process available for staff by the start of the next school year. So that is definitely ongoing, regular meetings. They also recommended, um, as part of that, that the student services department develop a materials. develop a materials inventory and database. And we have actually, we had actually been ongoing with that process. We are, we are continuing that. We anticipate that will be finished by the end of this school year with a really, um, easy to identify kind of, here are the deficit areas or the challenges you're seeing in a student and here are the resources we have. We are also working, I, I think you all know that we, we've been doing some training with our LDSs around reading strategies. And so we're looking at making sure that the interventions and the resources that we have are ones that we can really provide ongoing professional development and sustainability with that. We have a tremendous number of resources here in the district, but we want to make sure that we're really solid in what we have and what we're using. So we will be looking to sort of narrow that down a little bit so that they are all resources that we can ensure that we're providing ongoing professional development for our staff. Um, that process of referral for special education was another piece that they talked about. That is part of the MTSS process as well as our work with our psychologists around eligibility and, and, um, special education, how we get there. Continuum of services. So we talked, they talked a lot about a framework for the District Thirty-Nine continuum. We are working on developing some fact sheets to help, uh, parents understand a little bit about the difference between clinically-based services and school-based services because they, they are pretty different. Um, and, and very, very frequently our families have outside providers who, uh, may or may not understand the difference between what, what's going on in that private clinical setting versus what we as a school district are really responsible for providing and, uh, doing for students. Um, we're also working on guidelines and descriptors for co-teaching. We have a number of teachers and, uh, special education teachers who are joining in co-teaching. We've seen a lot of really great progress in our students who are in those co-teaching classrooms. So we are really working to continue, uh, both our description of it as well as our training so that we have really solid programming going on there. Um, we're also working on developing course descriptions for academic strategies. That is a, a class at the five-eight level that kind of has turned into being all things to all people. And again, we, what we've seen is that when we're trying to do everything in a course, what we end up doing is not being able to focus and really support the students in quite the way that we need to. So we are working with our LDSs and then we'll be getting some feedback from our general education teachers as well regarding what, what really we should be focusing that time with our students on. In terms of roles, responsibilities and personnel, we are working with our buildings around, um, helping them develop caseload and workload, um, documents, guidance documents so that our, our, one of the things our teachers noted is that, they want to know who their caseload is before the summer starts. Well, you can't guarantee that because obviously we have children move, we have staff members move, things shift. But that is one of the things we are working really hard to do is try and help get all the information to our principals so that they can work with their, their building teams around, these are the kids on your caseload. These are the classes at the five-eight level that we anticipate you'll be teaching. Now, there's a lot of moving pieces there. We have students selecting different schedules. We have kids moving in and out, but we're, we're working hard with the, in conjunction with building leadership to try and make sure that we can have all that information or as much of it as possible before everybody leaves for the summer. So if somebody's teaching a class that they're not as familiar with, they can spend that time really getting to know what it is. We're also, again, trying to make sure that if we have teachers that are working in a co-teaching environment, that they have an opportunity to do, get some of professional development in the summer as well as some co-planning time so that they can be very prepared for, this is how our partnership is going to work when kids walk back the first day of school in the fall. Um, we're also working on case manager responsibilities. We have a, a number of different, um, documents that sort of talk about what case manager responsibilities are. They span probably ten years in a variety of places. So we are working to consolidate those and make sure that we have one standard document that's really, um, making sure that all of our special education teachers know what their responsibilities are. You, we have in the recent years had people come from a variety of different districts and have different experiences. So we're just looking to sort of make that more consistent. Eligibility, we talked a little bit about MTSS, so we described that earlier and that is part of the path to eligibility for special education, that response intervention part of it. Um, we are also working with a psychologist to make sure that our eligibility process is consistent. We are also, again, working on, um, developing some documents for our parents to help them understand the difference between those private psych evaluations or neuropsych evaluations they get and how that dozen, dozen impacts special education eligibility. So that's a, that's a big piece of education that we're really going to be focusing on and working on is to help our parents understand that, again, the private world is very different from, from what school is, is looking for. Professional development, we have, we have so many things that we've been wanting to do over the past few years that have been really challenging to do because of COVID. Um, it's been, it's been a challenge to get subs. It's been a challenge to bring people in and out. We all have tried lots of Zoom things, but we know that, you know, a full day training on Zoom is really, really tough. We have been working on co-teaching, so we have an Academy Thirty-Nine going on right now. With one of our, uh, student services coordinators is running that. Um, we're going to be doing a, a summer institute day, again, where that gives those co-teaching partners an opportunity to, to learn about some of the models of co-teaching and then spend some time really planning, how is this going to work for us in our classroom? Um, and then we also have that job embedded professional development for our co-teaching teams. We've been doing, for paraprofessionals, we've been doing ongoing TV sessions. Um, we've been surveying them to try and get more information about what is it that they need and we'll continue with that. LEA and IEP training, we're going to be bringing in facilitated IEP training this summer. And that is a fantastic training for, um, people that facilitate. So it would be our administrators, our psychologists, some of our LDSs. They also offer a half-day training that, uh, allows parents to attend to learn more about the IEP process. We'll be doing that as well so that we have a variety of, of different ways to help train people. Again, this is one of those trainings that we've been wanting to do for several years and finally feel like we've got the time this summer and, and we can do it in person and in a way that's going to be really meaningful for people. Um, behavior, we've had Dr. Doug Bolton do a few different training with, uh, things with us. He did our opening day two years ago, um, did a, a session. He's done some behavior sessions with us since then and he's going to be coming in and doing a one-day, uh, summer institute for, um, LDSs, psychologists who are interested in learning more about, um, some different ways to look at behavior and some different ways to help our children navigate sort of the trauma that this pandemic has caused for them. Winter Institute Day this year, we, the student services department had a, a wide variety of choices. So we had, we've had the whole morning dedicated for student services staff and then they were able to pick and choose different options. And I think we got really good feedback from that. So that's something we're going to continue to try and do is give them that opportunity to, to pick what they want to go to or what they need more information in. And then communication, we, they, we talked a lot about communication. Obviously, I, I think communication is one of those pieces that everybody tries as much as they can to do it well and nobody ever feels like, feels like it's meeting their exact needs. So we are continuing to address this. This is the first thing that we asked our steering committee to take a look at is what, how, how do people think that they're going to be, that, that, the best way to receive communication? What is that? And even within that steering committee, we had a variety of different options. So we're working on how we can make sure that we're providing the communication that everybody needs in a timely way and in a variety of different methods so that it, it can help meet everyone's needs. We're developing some communication guidelines for, uh, how our, our parents and our students, our teachers interact. Um, we want to make sure that we're providing good communication for our parents while at the same time not overwhelming our teachers. They need to be available to actually teach students and to work with kids and do their planning. So we want to make sure that we have a really good balance there and help everybody to kind of understand what that is. Um, we're developing a parent handbook for special education services, so we've been working on that. Um, again, we've talked about the, the guidance documents. And then the review of policies, we've had that conversation here. The board has had that conversation several times about the policies that we do have that sort of govern communication and conduct with our staff and on our school grounds. Um, again, in the internal, we're looking at, the steering committee is really working on communication as well as how we use weekly housekeeping time, which is a, a weekly meeting of special education staff at each building. So we're looking at that. It's, um, it's pretty different at each building. So we're really looking at, again, how do we make sure that we're meeting the needs of the building, our teachers, as well as getting all of the really important information through at that point in time? And parent education, talked a little bit about that with the communication section, but, um, again, we're working on that parent handbook that will really detail sort of that continuum of services, what the eligibility process is, what RTI and MTSS is, and those communication guidelines. And then through, for parent trainings, we've got the District Parent Education Series that Tony and facilitates, um, House Thirty-Nine and then again, that facilitated IEP training that I'm excited about for summer. And then transitions. So we have a variety of activities that are in place for transitioning. Um, I think the biggest area that we all hear is that transition from fourth to fifth grade. We are also, many of the things that we used to do in the past were sort of on hold for the past two years. So this will be, uh, for me, the first transition year where I get to see a more normal transition process. But we definitely have, we have conversations occurring earlier for, at our IEP meetings. We're having drop-in meetings for families. So we're scheduling days and letting them, them, um, come and ask the questions that they have. And they, we have High Crest staff available for that. We're doing observations, which we've done in the past. Again, it was, it was more challenging last year when we were trying so hard to keep bubbles really intact, but we are, we are doing that again. We're doing more, um, visits for students over to High Crest. Um, we surveyed the fourth grade families. We're doing webinars throughout the year and, uh, pre-K, we've been doing similar things. Presentations for families, opportunities to talk with the, the incoming or school that they're going to. And then this is part of our strategic plan. So Kelly has been doing a tremendous amount of work on transitions related to that as well. That is it. Does anyone have any questions or?
Say, this is so exciting. It's really a ton of work and you just dug in and it's, there's just a lot happening. So thank you for all of that. Um, I had a question about co-teaching. I'd just love to hear a little bit more about that. I don't know, um, really what that looks like in our district and what you're thinking. Like, are there certain situations where that is suited? Is your hope that there's more of that? I just didn't know a lot about that model as related to students.
So we've been doing co-teaching at the five-eight level for select classes. So a co-taught like English Language Arts or math, um, course for a long time. And we started to, to delve into it at the elementary level as well. So, um, Ramona was the first school that kind of, they were, they had been exploring the, the model for a while. And my first year, we did a lot of work with the staff. Um, Cindy Anderson was, was very interested in co-teaching. And so we worked with the staff a lot. At the end of that first year, just before COVID, we determined that we would pilot it with one classroom last year. So we did and it, it went really well. And what that is, is there's a special education teacher and a general education teacher teaching almost all day long. The special ed teachers may be pulled during science, social studies if they, if there are other students that they need to work with. But they are doing small group teaching. They are, um, accommodating for students, modifying instruction. Both teachers are taking opportunities and times to provide instruction and you get the benefit of two teachers in that classroom really meeting the needs of all of the students. We do put in those classrooms then on a large number of kids with IEPs. Although we maintain what the, the legal requirement here in Illinois is, which is seventy percent of students who are general education students and thirty percent is with IEPs. So we keep it at that ratio. And they, we've seen tremendous progress and really good, uh, uh, it's a really great way to meet the needs of students who have disabilities while allowing them that access and, and involvement in that general education curriculum. So, um, this year, last year, uh, Ramona had one classroom. This year, I think they have five that are being co-taught. So not all of their children with IEPs are in a co-taught classroom, but many of them are. Okay, most of them are. Uh, we have other buildings that are looking at the model. It, there, there are a few things that have to happen in order to be able to do it. You need to have sort of a number of students at the same grade level that have needs that are compatible and can be in that classroom together. So that's, that's something that we definitely look at. We are also doing a lot of what we would call push-in or co-teaching for specific subject. So, uh, two teachers, a, a general education, a special education teacher might work together for the reading block or writing block.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
I'll just add the teachers who are working in that program. I've had the chance to meet with them a couple of times for different reasons and the, the enthusiasm around the work that they're doing, the special education teachers and the general education teachers is, is, is quite notable. And I think they find that the students in special education benefit just as much as the students in general education um, from that additional support within the classroom. So they continue to refine the way in which they, they operate and support students and work together. But, um, it's neat to see so much enthusiasm around this newer idea being implemented at the elementary schools.
One of the other things we see that's a, it's a side benefit is that a special ed teacher then becomes immersed in the curriculum at that grade level and can help, uh, another teacher at that grade level who may need some different ways to teach something or may have a student who needs some modifications or accommodations. They really know the curriculum and so they can provide more expertise related to that, um, specialized instruction.
I'll just echo Amy's excitement. Um, I know this represents a huge amount of work and that it, um, I'm really impressed at how well it addresses our current specific needs with a meaningful plan and, um, just how focused and appropriate it is. And I, I'm grateful for that. And I, I know we're adding some FTE. I'm curious if there's anything else you think you need from us? Or you'll, you'll let us know if that comes up? Um, and then I just had one quick question was I wasn't familiar with the acronym LEA. What is that?
Uh, Local Education Agency, um, or Local Education Administrator. It's, it's, LEA is your local education agency and it's the person in an IEP meeting who can kind of commit, um, resources on behalf of the district.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, just so along those lines, is that typically the assistant principal or principal?
It, it can be, it, it could be the assistant principal, the principal, the GLAD. Um, it could be our psychologist depending on the meeting or, um, that was, or our coordinators, our student services coordinators.
Um, no, that, this is excellent and comprehensive and you can follow so much information as I can. Um, you know, it definitely, some of the things that I took away from their presentation, it, it aggresses head-on and, you know, in terms of the tighter procedures and the parent education and communication. It's, it's critical to that. Um, balancing caseloads versus workloads, that's very clearly a priority here. Um, and then in terms of staffing, I know they recommended a couple of those positions and then also said to take a look at the paraprof. So is there any way to balance out? Because I'm sure adding those additional, I think it's four, right? Um, roles will have a financial implication and have we, have we looked at, you know, the, the balance overall?
Right, so we do always, every year when we look at staffing for special education, we do look at student needs. And we've been working over the past few years with our elementaries and our, with all of our schools about really making sure that we're thoughtful and really clear in the students who need more additional paraprofessional support. So we are, we don't, we want to make sure that we have the support that students need, but we want to make sure that, that we're not over staffing some of those positions because we do know that there's a cost to kids too when they have an adult with them all day long that they're, they're not learning some of the problem-solving skills that they need. Um, and we can see learned helplessness with students if, if that's the case as well. So we have been working on that as we moved along. That's something that we work on every year, um, regarding all of our staffing. We do have, um, two, we, we have, we have not fully staffed the last couple of years because we haven't been able to hire. So we did have some positions that we did not, weren't able to hire for this year. So in terms of our FTE, it's a net increase of two, but I'm not sure that it's actually going to be a net increase of two because again, we're looking at every position every year related to what, what do we need um, in terms of our speech minutes or our, our OT, so. That is, we're hoping that it won't be. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, mine, mine is, my question is, so is it, is this, do you think this is going to help with the turnover? I think my understanding is.
So hopefully.
Oh, okay. All right.
I think that, you know, what we, what we see right now is special education is, is an area where we don't have, nationwide, there is a shortage of special education staff. And we have a very well-resourced district, but we also have a very high achieving and high, you know, high demand district. And so we do have staff members who may or may not want to stay. I think that, that we have been trying very hard to provide additional support for them. So I do think that the additional coordinators at the buildings will be able to help mentor those, especially those newer staff members as they come. The expectations here are sometimes very different from expectations in other districts. So we're, our plan is to provide that additional support for them as they, they sort of move into our district and continue to, obviously, we, we want to keep our staff.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I think, I can ask you another question. So, so I see on the summary, I'm counting eight new employees. Is that, is that not, if eight is going to be net two?
So we are adding the two new behavior specialists, which we have, we have staffed for in the past, we just haven't been able to hire.
Oh, okay.
And then we are adding two coordinators. So we will have six coordinators.
Okay. So this is like a summary of what we have.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll add, John, in relation to your first question, I think from what we have been able to learn through this study and in talking with our staff, I think there's a couple of key areas where additional support is needed. And so this plan helps to bring that forward. I think there's been some, some burnout, quite frankly, which has led to some turnover. And so providing not only the support, but the training and the structure so that the job is a little more manageable should help with that. We continue through our strategic plan to look at exit interviews and really evaluate some of the information that's coming in that direction as well. But to be clear, a special education teaching job is a very difficult job. And there's not enough nationwide, there are not enough special educators to fill all the positions that are needed. And so I think while we're impacted here and we're not really nationwide, that there's an impact there. And so making sure that we're supporting and training and structuring those jobs so that they are manageable is really important work for us to be doing. So hats off to Kristin and her team and in the steering committee, which is just getting started in their work, I think will be really critical in helping to review and ensure that those supports are what's needed to support our staff.
Related, what I, was, struck me from the presentation originally was that there, I, I imagine your focus on communication with parents might really help this issue because it seems like maybe our, our family's expectations of communication from these professionals was higher than is typical in other places. And so that may be a factor in how hard the job is, that if we can communicate with families what's expected and maybe manage that in a way, it might make families know what to expect a little more clear and their job more manageable.
Yeah. I think that that's huge. It's just helping our parents understand kind of from the very beginning that this is what special education is. This is the path that you take on, on your road to get to an IEP. And these are the expectations, you know, if you have an IEP regarding that, your communication.
And some of that is proactive communication on our, on our part, our part administratively, from our, our principals and from our teachers as well. Because sometimes that, that communication gets a little strained when we're not being really clear about expectations, about the progress that we're seeing and what we're doing. Sometimes we're, we're not communicating all of that as well as we could be and we haven't helped our staff to, to do that. And so really kind of structuring what those expectations are, I think will help our staff feel supported, but also our, our families to feel supported and know what to expect as well.
I would say, I think these resources that you're developing will be really helpful for us as a board to, for us to understand the process and be able to help. We're presented with questions, so I'm looking forward to that personally.
We, we never really had a chance to discuss the consultant's report. You know, when they presented, there was very little time for questions and there was a lot of material that we had seen. And then we had scheduled a meeting and, you know, life intervened and we had two meetings of masks instead of being able to talk about this. So, so we haven't really discussed the consultant's report. And you did a lot of, of really good work here in terms of looking at processes and working with, with staff. But the report itself, I thought was very dismissive of parents and in some ways of the community. And as the output of that, some of the recommendations were based on that. So how did you, I mean, some of the things it says is, you know, the parents expected too much, they, and we've talked a little bit about communication, but saying, we're not going to give as much to the kids because they're expecting too much and we're going to modify that by talking to the parents more is a big step. It's expectations of the parents are probably too high in, as a aggregate. But transitioning from that expectation to something different is not trivial. So just talking to parents about it, I mean, how much of this report went in a direction that is not viewed as being good?
Sorry, Frank. I, I don't know that I took away the same thing that you did from the report in terms of the approach to parents. I think the, what, what I heard and I think what we're planning toward is really being clear about the intervention services and supports that are available through special education, but also available through that continuum of an MTSS structure. Sometimes that means special education and sometimes it, it doesn't. And, and yet it is incumbent upon us as educators and educational teams to ensure that students are making the progress that is expected. And so that's the piece. It isn't about pulling back services, but being more clear about the services that are being provided and how we are progress monitoring to ensure that students are successful. Whether that's through an IEP and a student actually has that label in those services or whether that is through the MTSS process, that's really what the consultant spent quite a bit of time talking about is that continuum of services, which sometimes includes designation of special education and sometimes doesn't. And being really clear about what that eligibility criteria is and how we're supporting students along that journey. I think the consultant spent some time talking about that eligibility criteria and the fact that sometimes in our district, we've had families come forward with an outside provider or private evaluation, and that has led to eligibility. And sometimes that has been very warranted and other times there should be some other intervention services and supports put in place before that eligibility is designated. Because just as Kristin talked about for a one-on-one support service, there are benefits and there are drawbacks to those services. Same is true for a special education eligibility designation. There are certainly benefits, but there are also drawbacks. And we have to be really purposeful and intentional about the way in which we're evaluating students and identifying what services they're eligible for and what services they really need in order to progress within the curriculum. So it's, it's not so much about just pulling back and talking to parents. It really is about being really clear about that continuum of services, which is work that our MTSS committee has been doing, but has been kind of bolstered by this, by these recommendations that have come forward as well. I don't know, Kristin, if I said that exactly the way you would have, but you might have some more detail. Or Dana, if you want to jump in, happy to have your input as well.
I, I think with all of it, it's a process. It's a process for helping our families understand what, what special education services are and are not. I think that, you know, many times we have families who think that if we get an IEP, that's going to, that's going to be the ticket to something. You know, it's going to, it's going to mean my child is going to be in the eighty-fifth percentile or, you know, special education is designed for, for students who have a disability and need specialized instruction in order to access and progress in the general education curriculum. It's not based on a, like, if we get to a certain percentile, then we're, we're no longer eligible or we're, it's a, it's a process. And it's a process of really working with families. We have two years' worth of pandemic now where we, we, to be honest, we didn't do, we didn't dismiss some students that we probably should have because we were in the middle of a pandemic and it's hard to judge what, what, what's real and what isn't. And we also probably didn't give some students IEPs because we were in the middle of a pandemic and we didn't have a good way to really evaluate, are we providing strong intervention that students were not able to respond to?
Yeah. I, I wonder, Frank, if one of the things that you're thinking of, because it struck me as well, there was a recommendation or a discussion as, as ARP was presenting about doing a complete review of all IEPs immediately, eligibility, and potentially dismissing some students based on that review. And we recognize, having talked through that with Dana and really looked at that with our special education team, that doing that carte blanche, kind of just for everyone at the same time, doesn't make sense and wouldn't be in the best interest of our students nor in the best interest of our use of resources. And so what instead we do, students are required to be evaluated every three years officially. And at every annual review, you really look at how appropriate are these services? Are students making progress? Do we need to make adjustments? And so we're going to, instead of just taking from now to June and reviewing every single one, we will do that as part of the regular annual review and triennial evaluation process that is dictated through IDEA. And so again, that's where we've kind of leaned a little more heavily on our, our conversations with our administrators and with our special educators and our, our related services professionals, but also on Kristin's expertise and on Dana's guidance there as well. So that was a part two for me where I, I was a little concerned that that recommendation would just be implemented across the board by June. And that really doesn't align with what we know to be best practice on behalf of our students and our, the resources that we have available to us. Dana, did I say that?
Yeah. I, I think that's important. And I think the other thing is, I, I think there's some, the high-level takeaways from the report are, are, are critical. And they're really something that I think, you know, we need to listen to and the district is listening to them and, and responding to them. But I also think just working in this field and working with many other districts in the area and are just around Chicago, you know, some of the, the over-identification that's, that's in some districts and I think looking at that, you cannot look at that in, in a way that's parent-friendly in this one big, you know, everybody needs to look at their IEP and make sure that everyone is actually eligible. You have to look at it student by student. It really just doesn't mean, it, I know you want to do a program, but as, as lawyers will tell you, every kid is like a snowflake, right? And that sounds sort of pat, but they really are unique and you have to look at each child's unique needs. And when we look at cases, it's each child's unique needs. And sometimes teachers think a student is not eligible because this and this and this has happened. And, you know, an administrator or an attorney or a psychologist with maybe more experience in the field will come in and say, no, actually, the child is eligible. So we have to be very thoughtful and very individualized in the way we approach this. So it's good to have some general recommendations, but like looking at the eligibility one step at a time as those annual reviews, I'm sort of in a bad spot here. I feel like I can't see everybody. I'll scoot up. Looking at those annual reviews when they come up and looking at individual progress is a much better approach, just both legally and I think from a parent perspective, right? Because you're looking at each child as an individual. And I think the other takeaway is, you know, really professionalizing teachers and making sure that teachers, LBS, teachers that have the LBS certificate, the related service providers, they're really experts about what students need in school to thrive. And a private provider is really looking at your whole life developmentally, right? Your, you know, are you measured up to all of these things? There's, and, and so some of the emphasis that the private providers put is not always the emphasis that we need for, for school success. And I think the IEP is really driven around school success and thriving in that school environment. And so doing the professional development, making the staff the experts, looking at kids individually, those two things are sort of the two cornerstone. So I think that's, that was some of the takeaway that I had.
And so Frank, to your point, I think we all shared some of those concerns that it was like, nope, you have to do it this way and, and dismiss or dismiss a parent's concern or partnership within that. And we believe like you very strongly that a parent's voice must be heard and be part of that, that decision-making process. But we need to structure that a little bit differently moving forward so that everyone's voice at the table is, is empowered as we're making those decisions.
One thing I just have to add, because facilitated IEP is a very, very good idea. I mean, I have gone to hundreds, if not thousands of IEP meetings. And I think the, the structure of a facilitated IEP where I've been a part of that, it is a very empowering process. I think it's, it's from the parent perspective, I've seen parents be very reassured by it. It really makes the annual review a, a much more meaningful, purposeful meeting from a parent perspective.
A lot of information, Frank. Did you, did we answer that question? This is something we spent a lot of time looking at and really trying to evaluate over the last several.
And that's why I know we're, we're stepping back, but we never really had the chance to talk about this report. And what you summarized was part of what I was, a large part of what I was hearing. You know, the report was detailed in areas that I don't have expertise and don't need or want expertise. So what I was picking up on was some of the other things. And what you summarized was part of what I was picking up from the report. Not saying that I agreed with it, but saying that the report left me with that almost bad taste in my mouth. So how we either ignored that part or picked out the parts that made sense and dealt with them was what I wanted to delve into more. Because they do have things, you know, just in the section about roles of LBSs, low LBS morale, much higher than average number of, of paraprofessionals, significant problem having too many paraprofessionals. I mean, there's a lot of, especially in the written one, a lot of very strong words that they put in this report. And we never had a chance to discuss, discuss that. I mean, I don't agree with the words necessarily from an outsider again, but they said a lot of those things. And then they said, and now we need to add more LBSs and remove parapros. And it seemed like what we ended up with was dismissing some of their dismissive comments, but adding more LBSs and not significantly reducing the parapros. So I don't know where we ended up. We ended up taking the things that added more people. We didn't take away as much the how we're going to spend less time and less money. The two plus four, two to four people we're adding is a huge number from a historical standpoint in terms of adding that. In the last ten years, we have had very few cases where we've added more people. And whenever we bring up adding more, you know, a half person for this or a person for that, we tend to go back to the, you know, we want to keep our budgets correctly. So even adding two people, but adding four is not a trivial addition to our staffing. So I want to be sure I understand why this is the case. I mean, we spend, I won't say disproportionate amount of time, of money, but we spend a lot of money on, on the IED, on the, I'm going to get the wrong word, on, on this community, on the special needs community. We spend a lot of money in this, in this district on that. And I'm not saying it's inappropriate, but to now say we should spend even more. And I'm not saying it's inappropriate, but to now say we should spend even more, when, when we talk about spending money on other things in the district, we say that we want to watch our budget and not add those people. So I, I don't, I don't have enough information yet to understand why this area is the most important area to add more people. We're doing stuff, you know, thinking about it, educating people more, all those things are great. And it sounds like you've made a lot of progress in that. But then saying adding two more or potentially four more, but not really four because we might not have as many parapros.
Frank, to be clear, it's two more people. The other two positions weren't able to be filled over the last two years. So we're talking about adding two additional people to help us address some of the concerns that were highlighted by ARP, but directly from our staff and our administrators is they're seeking support in doing better for our students and in structuring the eligibility and the services and the supports and the professional development for our teachers, both LBS and general educators, and for our administrators who need to be responsible as the LEAs for leading all of this. They need more support in order to accomplish the change that is recommended not only by ARP, but by the board in soliciting this evaluation, these two additional people are needed. And I think ARP pointed toward that, we pointed toward that, the board has been really supportive in telling us that we should come forward with recommendations if we need additional staff to let the board know what those staff are. This is the first time, I think in my tenure where I've come forward and said, we need additional staff. These two additional staff members plus the filling of the behavior specialists are critical to us continuing to review exactly what you're talking about, which is our use of paraprofessionals, our structures for LBSs and how they're supported so that we don't continue to see the turnover, the overwhelm and the exhaustion that we've seen in our special education staff, but not just our special education staff. Because when one group is overwhelmed, the entire system is overwhelmed. Our administrators have been overwhelmed, our general educators, our reading specialists, all of those people need support. And this is one small step in that direction to help us structure the programs in a better way and a more consistent way so that we can evaluate whether or not our students are making progress and whether or not we need the one-on-one paraprofessionals in every instance. In many instances, we do, but not in every instance. I think what ARP came forward with is kind of just a, a look at the numbers. And that doesn't work in special education when you're looking at each individual student. You can't simply say, wow, there's a, a lot of, there's a lot of this one group, we should reduce that. Without looking at each individual student's needs and growth projection, we can't just say that, again, carte blanche, that they need to be dismissed or they need to be reduced or they need to be added for that matter. I think it's, it's important that we provide this support so that we can move forward with some of the structural supports that are necessary to continue to evaluate what's happening for our students, but not only for our students, for our staff as well. Dana, I saw you raise your microphone, so I'm going to let you jump into.
I, I do think for the boards, just, I think the, the report was very comprehensive and clearly they interviewed of many, many people. And I think the tone of the report, you know, probably reflects the tone of some of the staff members and, but it's also a very unique point in time, which I don't think we need, we should forget, is that we have just come off, you know, this very difficult time. I mean, I was just here with you handling some of the stress of that. And that was something that you felt as a board, but you know, teachers are feeling that every day as kids adjust to this new circumstance. So I think that's something that needs to be taken into account when you read the report as a whole. I, I don't think you can read it without understanding that. I also think that as you have, you have, you have a very wide array of, of students on the continuum in your district. And not all districts have that. Some districts are smaller and they may not serve some of the students with more significant needs. And I think when you are serving students with more significant needs, the communication burden on the teachers is significantly higher, just because to explain it, I mean, sometimes I have students that I'm working with and, you know, if they're nonverbal, if they have behaviors, if there are, you know, a behavior specialist, a social worker, it's, it's very similar if you've ever had someone, and this is not a very positive analogy, but I think it's helpful, if you've ever had someone in the hospital with sort of a serious medical condition that's confusing and, you know, the doctor talks to you for five seconds. And so sometimes they'll assign a social worker or someone in the hospital to sort of fully go through. And I think that's when you look at these coordinator positions, they're really assisting teachers who are working, it's very hard to work in the field and work with a student who is nonverbal and be giving them all the attention they need and managing the communication to explain to the parent and make the parent a partner in this very sort of complex program that addresses the student's behavioral and educational needs, which doesn't, is very different than I'm teaching reading, I want the kids to go from Fontes and Pinnell G to Fontes and Pinnell H, we're going to read this story and it's going to have 15 more multi-syllabic words in it than the story before, and we're going to write down every time they, you know, that's like ticking a chart. This is a little bit more complex. And I, I think, you know, take the tone a little bit with a grain of salt. I, I, not to minimize what the teachers are feeling, but I don't, I think that they're, the, the reflection here is that they are reflecting a need for more support to manage these communications in an effective, you know, productive way, you know? Because it's, it's, I think that's the other thing, the quality of the communication. If the quality of communication is high and parents really have a deep understanding of what you're doing every day, rather than the quantity of the communication, you know, I think back to, you know, they ate their apple at lunch. No, that's not a very important, meaningful communication, but sometimes people are demanding that when they don't understand the purpose and the real work of the program and what we are supposed to be focusing on. They're just nervous. And I think reducing that parent nervousness really comes from meaningful communication about what the school is trying to work with, with their child.
Thanks Kristin, I found your, your remarks, your, your takeaway from the report to be really valuable. So, and I'm just curious as to what you think moving forward, like did you find this report to be helpful to you or did it tell you things that you already knew? One of the things that Dana was talking about affected, was like, some of the feedback, like from parapros or whomever, that might not come out if it were you who directed this sort of like, you know, analysis into them. And if you do find this report to be of value, how often of a review moving forward does that need to occur?
Yeah, so I think it's always helpful to, to get an objective set of eyes on sort of what's going on. Certainly there were some of these areas that I had already thought as I was working here, oh, I'd like to make some changes here or there. This provided another set of eyes that, that either validated or gave me other areas to continue to look at. I think that the work that we did with the administrative team to really look through and develop themes and figure out kind of where, what we really needed to do to move us forward was extremely helpful. And we have our action plan and we're going to continue to work on that. So I think we'll just, we'll, we'll work on those items and move our way through and continue to sort of evaluate where we are as we move forward.
I'm just thinking, I, I don't know if this helps at all Frank or not, but I'm thinking about your comments and I guess I just see this with a different framework. You talked about resources being allocated to this population and that's just not the way I think about it with education. I see this as supporting the population service pool. So I, when we talk about adding these two positions, to me that is not reserved for just certain, I just don't see it as a separate population.
Frank, can I say something? I, I think, you know, it's, so I'm, I'm, I don't do education, you know what I mean? In my background, and I think, I think what, if I were to translate what Frank is doing, it's trying to understand, right? Like I've been on the board for five years, I think I have a pretty good understanding of why we spend what we spend on special education and it makes sense to me and, you know, but I've also sat in this seat when we've had, you know, basically tax protesters in line going back to the very back of the room, you know, and need to be able to explain why we spend what we spend. And, and I, I think part of this discussion is to work that out. So at least for me, it is. So, so I get it, a lot of work was done, you guys have done a really good job defending the request for more resources. I don't know, I, I think that's probably what Frank, you, you wanted to accomplish.
I, I agree with you completely, and I guess that's why I wanted to reiterate it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think the, the two things, it's my fault in terms of how I said it, are, kind of got blended. There's the report, which I found large parts of the report at the level that I was able to understand when it was presented quickly, has, as I said, has been dismissive as, and that's the report. Now, inside the report, there were lots of, of details that were picked up and that you move forward on. So I was trying to, to, to talk, separate the two, talk about the report itself. And, and, you know, we don't get into the detail, we don't necessarily need to, but you know, some of the things in the report were, I think, I won't say wrong, but dealing with parents differently. And I wanted to make sure that I understood, you know, you either take the whole report, you take part of it, which parts of it were we taking? Because I didn't agree with some of the things that they said in terms of how we should deal with our parents differently. But I wanted to make sure I understood, again, the report is different than what we're doing. And like I said, if the report had said almost exactly what you had said, I would have said, you know, probably makes sense for the community for, for moving things forward. But I just wanted to, to tie those two pieces together because there were things in this report that I wouldn't want us to do. And it's that supporting student was never the part, it was the expectations of the parents balancing those things. And, and also I didn't want us to get to the point where some of the things that they said we do excessively, whether that's true or not, got kept and we just addressed adding even more people so that we could continue to do things. And I don't know where that falls, but again, they recommended adding people, you're recommending adding people, they recommended balancing that, but we'll have to see how that, that comes out. I think if nothing else, the, the difficulty of staffing this role by itself indicates that we should have a slight surplus, you know, because if you, if you can never get to 100% staffing, then you need to try to get to 110% so that when you miss it by a little bit, you're still at 100. I don't know if I said that quite right. So from just that standpoint, I would, I would feel comfortable saying, you know, we should try and hire a couple more because we know that, you know, attrition, et cetera, means that we average at 100%. So you overshoot so that you can get the average right. That in this environment and for those types of skill sets makes sense. To say that the target's 120% and we love to actually build that 120% is a little bit different conversation. So, yeah, I, I like the output of what you did from the report, I did not like the one sentence summary. And I, and I still have the question about there, through things saying that we may be doing something illegal that I'd like to hear.
So this is the chance to talk about that. And anything else that you want to talk about in the presentation from ARP? That, that really is what this discussion is meant for, because we jumped right in and started action planning around that and really that is the work of the administrative team. That's how we've chosen to structure this discussion, but any and all questions, discussions, like this is the chance that the board has to, to talk about it. So bring those forward and you can, Dana's here to help with answering that as well.
Yeah, so that, when, just in, in the report, it said, you know, we may be doing things that violate federal law. When I see that written down, it, it brings up one of two things, either the report again is, is not a good report, or that we have some potential liability as a board, we should at least understand if we do or don't.
Can you be specific about where you saw that or what, in what regard? I think I have an understanding of that, but your understanding might be different from mine. So I want to make sure we're honoring your, your question.
I think it actually came down to, though the report wasn't specific in terms of federal funding for IEPs and if we identify IEPs differently than the federal definition, then potentially there's federal funds that flow in ways that may not be appropriate. And again, I'm, I'm reading more into it, but it did specifically say something about, you know, we may be violating federal laws, so.
Yeah, so in that regard, that, that's what we were talking about with eligibility criteria, where they were alluding to the possibility that we're over-identifying students or we're, we're naming students as eligible for special education, either for longer, meaning we should have dismissed those students sooner, or that initial eligibility is granted when it may not be warranted. And so they're suggesting that we reevaluate everyone. Obviously that, that isn't realistic within our system to be able to do. And so taking a careful look at our eligibility criteria and the processes we use, and then as I articulated a little earlier in this meeting, really going through systematically and looking at each individual student, which is in line with federal law. I think some of, in, in talking through it with Dana, I think some of that was maybe overstated in terms of that, that federal law aspect of it and how it's implemented here in Illinois. So Dana has spent some time kind of working through that with us, helping us to understand what the implications of that are and, and actually following up with ARP as well. So Dana, I'll let you speak to that from kind of like a legal aspect.
I think they sort of, what they're referring to is that if your eligibility criteria are, are not congruent with the eligibility criteria that is established by federal law, that there could be some sort of penalty in your funding from the US Department of Education. But really that, you know, the real penalties are tied to over-identification on the base of race, on the base of national origin. So I mean, I think there's a little bit of hyperbole here, just for the federal government to come in and say, you've over-identified too many students. It would have to be so gross, I mean, it's just not a chance. There's just no, that's not a real area of liability. It's kind of, they're flagging something for you and they're trying to, to raise the seriousness of it, perhaps because of what they've heard in the, in the field. But I don't see that as like a valid, like legal concern, like I, you know, in looking at the same things that they're looking at and looking at your state board of education report card and your eligibility numbers and the, you know, the different classes of, of students that you track those numbers by, I don't see any concern in that area. I think that they have, they're having a very rote, also reading of federal law. And I mean, the other, just sort of practical aspect of this is really the federal government is looking at these big, huge systems where kids are being put in special education and perhaps not exposed to rigor, you know, based on their race, based on their socioeconomic status, based on their language stats. And that's the ill that the federal And that's the ill that the federal government is trying to address when it takes away funding and puts monitoring in. And that's not something that we're seeing in, in the North Shore, especially, you know, in Nutria's Peter area. So, I don't see that as a particularly, the other area, just to sort of address it, is the whole idea that the LEA has to be an administrator. That is not true in Illinois law. That's not what the federal regulation says. The federal regulation just says you have to have someone at the table who can promise the resources of the school district. Under Illinois law, anybody that works for you with a license can promise the resources of the school district. So, I can be a second grade teacher, and if I say, "We're going to get your kid an extra spelling workbook because, you know, he needs one at home and ones that's..." You're buying it because the teacher said you are. And I think that teachers understand that responsibility. I think that teams, this is not just like people are granting things to people without, you know, there's a lot of planning, and, you know, you're looking at your evaluation data. You're really determining needs before you get to that meeting, anyway. But you're also working with parents, and you, you have the flexibility to respond to parents as they're raising concerns and raising issues. And that's, that's actually the practice in most school districts. Sometimes it's the school psychologist, sometimes it's the case manager. But you certainly don't need the principal to come to every IEP meeting or an administrator to come to every meeting.
Right, those were the two areas that we really spent some time digging in from a legal perspective, is the eligibility criteria and eligibility reviews. And our takeaway was, and is, that we need to build some systems around that and be more clear about our systems for evaluation and our eligibility criteria, and make sure we're supporting those teams to make the decisions that are both in the best interest of students, but also aligned with the special education law. So, that's the one aspect. And the other aspect that really we did spend a lot of time digging into is, is the LEA. Does that person have to hold an administrative license? Or can they be someone who has a different type of a license but has been granted the authority to help make those decisions? And what we've learned from Dana, and quite frankly, what I think some of us knew before, is, is in, there really is, long as the district is granting that authority, they don't have to hold an administrative license. They have to have the authority to make the decision because technically, it is the IEP team that is making that decision. And so, it was nice to spend some time reviewing that and having that affirmed by our legal team's review, and in really looking at who can help those teams make those decisions. Again, our coordinators really help a ton with that. And so, even when there's a, an administrator at the meeting, even if our principals are at the meeting, our assistant principals are at the meeting, that coordinator can really help with that because they are specialists in special education law and resources, in programming. And so, it really goes hand in hand as we're, as we're working through that. Our coordinators currently are within the teacher's contract, so they're licensed as teachers, not as administrators.
Yeah, I, I assumed we wouldn't change the, the support that we gave to our students. It's just categorizing it, and when it's reported to the federal government for its funding, you know, just to make sure that we were categorizing it correctly, not changing what we did. But if we had to change the, the name so that when it gets reported to the federal government, it's consistent. And, and the problem is, when you get a report like this in the record, and it says "we may be violating," then you've done the work, but that's what I wanted to make sure that, that we now have a paper trail saying that we looked at it and we're not violating.
I would also just say that I would hope and expect that, long term, based on all of this work and the structure and the processes that go into place, that we will see efficiencies in, in the system. And we will see that in other ways, certainly with the burnout and new staff and rehiring. But just efficiencies in terms of use of time among the employees and the staff. I think so much of, I've had two children with IEPs at one time or another, and I think so much comes down to the, the clear process and the understanding among the parent. And I will just say, and I totally want examples. A parent told me, asked if she could request a certain LBS. And I said, "Now, I, why would you want to?" "Are you not happy with the ones that you currently have?" And she said, "No, it's not really that, but I know that this other one gives, has a daily folder with daily reports for the child." And I, you know, I said, "I would have to look into it, but I don't think that that is, you know, part of, of the standard process." And, you know, again, like, I didn't, I didn't know. But I'm not sure that, you know, that, that parent was looking for someone to provide more work, even if it wasn't necessarily beneficial to the child or to be part of the, the IEP, as one example. And then I, and then I think the efficiency, the efficiencies, when we continue to look at it as the continuum, are critical. And so, a lot of this, it seems like a huge, a big investment right now, but hopefully it is, you know, the benefit we will continue to reap forward.
Comments? Questions?
So much. I, I want to again acknowledge, thank you to the board for your support, not only of this evaluation, which, which was an undertaking, and certainly an investment of time and resources on behalf of the district, but also of the process moving forward as we really empower the steering committee and Kristin and her team to help direct some of the improvement efforts that I think will help us to continue to provide excellence for all of our students. And I think that's, that's really important. This was a, a vulnerable moment, I think, for our district to be willing to open up every aspect of our programmings throughout our schools to someone from outside coming in, to really look at what are our teachers saying? What are our parents saying? What's happening within our schools? What do the data tell us? So, I, I think that's, that's an important element of ongoing improvement efforts and continuous improvement. And I think the timing was, was really perfect for this, obviously, outside of, outside of COVID, which, you know, I'll acknowledge, today is March 14th, I think. And exactly two years ago, we shifted into remote learning, and we're uncertain if that would last two weeks or a little bit longer. And certainly, it lasted a whole lot longer than that. And so, for our district to persevere and continue to provide great services for students, to support our staff, and also to continuously work toward improvement, I think, is, is really important. So, thank you to the board. Thank you to the administrative team and to our special education team, who have really taken some time to dig in and understand the recommendations and to help us move forward with action planning. So, thank you.
I, I think we'll move to public comments, which, at this point, we will accept in person and remotely via Zoom. I don't know if there's anybody here in person, and it looks like not online. So, we will move to our action item. I seek a motion to approve the bids for the 2022 Harper Asbestos Abatement Project.
I move to award the base bid in the amount of $97,000 per bid specifications for the 2022 asbestos abatement project at Harper Elementary School to DEM Services Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $97,000 for a total Harper Elementary School project cost of $97,000.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Van Zieke?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Penn?
Yes. Motion carries. So, we'll move to old business, where we do have a few topics that I know of, starting with accepting public comments via Zoom, that we are back in person. You know, that has been brought up on the topic.
Yeah, so, the board is obligated at any open meeting, a public meeting, to provide the opportunity for the public to engage with the board, to, to offer public comment. It is not required that the board offer a remote opportunity and an in-person opportunity. There's something as a requirement that you offer the opportunity. So, pre-pandemic, that was almost always provided in person. And moving forward, as we navigate kind of this return to a little more normalcy, it is up to the board how they wish, or you wish, to organize and set parameters for public comment. So, it really is up to the board.
Thoughts? Personally, I think it was wonderful that we were able to shift that way and provide that opportunity. To me, at this time, it feels appropriate to have people come in person if they wish to provide public comments, knowing that we could always open that up again, yes, as the situation changes. I don't know how they're feeling.
I'm, I'm torn on this one. I, I think there's an advantage to people coming in person. On the other hand, especially for the committee, the whole meetings, an 8:00 AM meeting is, that could run for two, three hours, is literally impossible for a significant portion of our community to participate in, where it is possible for them to, to be able to, to follow it via, you know, streamed on, you know, what we're going to continue to do, I assume, yeah, in a live-streamed meetings. I know, you know, anybody that has any kind of a nine-to-five, eight-to-ten, whatever the numbers are nowadays, type of a schedule, even if they're working from home, there's really no way they can then participate in this type of meeting. And we're already doing streaming, so I, I think that, I, I think there's enough value here that, that we should see. If it ends up being abused, we could maybe come back to it, but I would recommend that we continue it.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I see value as well. And, and maybe we could compromise and continue Zoom for this meeting. So, you could say, this meeting in mourning, but then make the other one live.
I guess we'd have to have a clear rationale for that. I, I think there's a population for whom the morning meetings would be incredibly difficult. There's also a population for whom evenings would, as a, as a stay-at-home mom, that would be, I, I couldn't leave my kids in the evening. So, I think, in my mind, it makes sense to make it consistent.
Well, okay, so, in that case, I mean, I, I think that, I would assert that a live comment is likely to be more civil than a remote. So, I would, I would care for a live.
By liking it in person?
Well, it's not like someone who isn't in person doesn't have a way to reach out to the board and express their opinion. They can do that in an email.
Sure. This is going to be a, oh, no, I was agreeing. What do we, to make a direction, do we, how do we proceed with that?
Tell us what you'd like to do, and we will post the agenda accordingly. So, every time we post the agenda, we make it clear what opportunities exist for a public engagement during the meeting. So, there was a period where everything was remote, and then there was a period where it was in person, and people were able to submit public comments. We were reading them out loud, and then we shifted to the Zoom. So, really, it's just, you provide us the direction, we'll make it really clear on the agenda. So, those who wish to provide public comment or written communication to the board are able to do so.
Can I just say, um, we're also now at this point where we don't need to limit the number of people who are here. So, yeah, so I think that that's another reason why we should be moving back towards our, you know, initial action plan in person.
I, I just wanted to really respond, it's done, and, and it sounds like there's a direction and an opportunity. Technology has allowed for these meetings to, to bring more public into it. And as pointed out, you know, there are, there are people that can't make evening meetings ever. There are people that can't make morning meetings ever. And we have had almost nobody that's, that's taken advantage of, of this opportunity, which doesn't mean that it's not valuable. It means that we're not being overwhelmed by it. I don't think we've run into cases where the people that have done online have been abusive or anything like that. And plus, there's an easy mute button if that, that does happen. I think the value of, of at least making it available to people that otherwise couldn't participate, given that the technology is there and it's not really a big burden because we're going to continue to livestream these meetings anyway, outweighs the history of, of having only in person. And, and I think if people that are passionate, they're going to come in person anyway. So, it's, it's not that, you know, suddenly you get 100 people that normally wouldn't participate. So, I'd, I'd, I'll, I'll be outvoted, and that's fine, but, but I, I feel strongly that we should allow people that can't participate normally to at least have the option of participating.
Yeah, I think, I, I understand your thinking for sure. I guess I just agree with Erin in that they still have, as always have, a way to communicate their thoughts and feelings that are publicly shared.
But, but I mean, a written communication and a presentation, and especially how we do it here, where you have to be on video, you know, it can't be just like an anonymous, you know, voice call that, that you don't know who it is. They have to be publicly present, is significantly different than sending it in.
So, we just need consensus from the board? Or really, because it is the board president's responsibility to help build and affirm the agenda, we just, we need that direction for moving forward?
It seems like there's a majority for in-person. Or, yes, for in-person. So, I think, at this point, let's move in that direction and know that we want to encourage public engagement with best accountability. And if the situation changes in any way, we can shift back. Perfect.
Should we plan to implement that for this upcoming March regular board meeting or beginning in April?
Is there a reason not to do it for?
I think sometimes it's been the board's practice that this is more of a discussion timeframe, and then it, action is taken. This isn't a decision that requires action. But if someone is only following the regular board meeting, it would allow us the opportunity at the next board meeting to announce this change and then implement it in April. Either way, is absolutely legal and at the board's prerogative.
That sounds fine with me. So, just keep it the same for next Monday?
Okay.
And then we shift later as well.
So, I have, I have a, a follow-up then. Let me, that's aside, we, we kind of, we're consistent on that. But, and part of why I was bringing that up is it didn't really require that many more resources, a little bit of extra time from, from Tony to make sure that the right person is, is, you know, in the, in the waiting room and, you know, maybe a different Zoom thing. There are a lot of resources with us livestreaming these meetings. And, you know, I would have said, what is the advantage of live streaming? Is that people can respond in real time. Now that we're not responding in real time, why are we livestreaming? And there are resources associated with livestreaming. So, I think the two are connected. I mean, my mind would have been connected the other way, but that's fine. If we're now saying that the, you can't comment in real time, then...
Online.
Online, then the advantage of live streaming is minimized. I mean, posting it relatively soon is one thing, but I know there's, there's some technology and resource issues associated with live streaming. So, why do we livestream if people can't livestream?
So, to, just, let me just point out kind of what the his, board's history is, because I know we have some new board members. It has been the, the board's practice, I believe... It has been the, the board's practice, I believe, and Tony will correct me if I'm misstating this, um, I believe it's been the board practice to livestream the regular board meetings, even prior to my arrival. Those were livestreamed. Committee, the whole meetings were not livestreamed. In fact, they weren't video recorded and posted at all. There was simply an audio recording that was made available, if I'm correct.
Slightly different.
Okay, thanks, Tony, step in.
Prior to us using Zoom, we didn't even have the Zoom licenses. We used the equipment that's behind that window there. There was some equipment that transmitted over to the local cable channel, which we've always wondered how many viewers even watched it, uh, because it was only on that local cable channel. It did not go out to YouTube. We did capture the recording. It was, uh, posted in a different way. It used different technology, a lot more complex. Actually, our use and implementation of Zoom made it a lot easier. In my mind, keeping a Zoom format in front of you makes sense even post-pandemic. There's a camera in front of each of you. Whether you're here or remote, you can participate yourselves. If you choose to continue using Zoom just for internal meeting purposes, it really just is a couple of clicks to have a live broadcast on YouTube. If we go back to no longer using Zoom, and we have to use the equipment back there, I do have to make a small investment in some equipment to take that signal that would go back to the cable channel, but also stream it out. It's not a large amount of money, but it would be a couple thousand dollars. So to answer your question, if we continue to use Zoom internally, a couple clicks were there. It's not actually a lot of work. If we just record, and I don't take those couple of clicks, yeah, it's not getting posted that evening. The video has to render in Zoom, we have to download it, re-upload it, um, depending on the length of the meeting, if we have a four-hour meeting, it takes a little while. Sometimes we haven't gotten the link to you guys until the afternoon the next day. If it's a one-hour meeting, it's pretty quick in the morning. So, sorry, it's a little bit of a complicated answer, but I hope that helps take a little bit of the mystery behind the scenes.
Yeah, I, I just, what's simpler? It's, we've, we've really, in some ways, lost the advantage of it being livestreamed, if we can comment livestreamed, so then whatever's simpler. And it sounds like it's still simpler to do livestream.
It's a couple of clicks.
So that, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I would just add, you know, you've talked about participation, and I would, I guess, challenge you to broaden your definition of participation. I'm going to confess that I watched eight years of board meetings before I ran, and most of that was at home, and I was organizing something in my room while I was on live, and I wasn't here commenting. Eventually I came, because I realized there were things I got out of it being here, and my kids are older, and I sat off-camera, because I didn't want to be on camera. Um, so there was value for me in seeing that live, in knowing the decisions were being made that night, and I wasn't, you know, catching up two days later or whenever. So I, I would be in favor of us keeping it a li, as a livestream.
You know, one, one other piece to add is we do have League of Women's Voters, as well as a couple other people that do watch it live, and I know that because if you're not speaking into your microphones, I'll get an email during the meeting, you'll see me walk over and adjust or mention something to you. So we do have local community members that have now gotten into the practice. They, if you notice, our League of Women Voters rep doesn't come, but is almost always online. So I just want to make sure you knew that that was happening.
Yeah, I'd, I'd strongly encourage us recording these, and that, I was just trying to, and you answered the question, it's simpler to do it, so that's fine.
I was curious about that, too. So it sounds like we'll continue with this, and we'll discuss and share our new plan on Monday-
Yep.
And implement in April.
Perfect. I think that's a really good plan, and thank you for the direction.
Great. And then, so our other old business, uh, listing-related, oh, yes, on our agenda, strategic plan, uh, goals.
Some found that helpful. It was a great suggestion, and so we said we would try it, um, and evaluate how beneficial that was. I think, um, this is the opportunity for the board to decide if it is in fact beneficial or if it, um, just kind of clutters the agenda. Either way is fine with us. It is not a huge additional effort from our administrative team as we agenda build, but, um, certainly want to make sure that what's on the agenda is really clear for our community. And so if, if we're feeling this isn't beneficial, we're happy to discontinue that as well.
Again, um, so I, I recall, my recollection is that we kind of started down this path because there, there was a thought about aligning, realigning the committees to align with the strategic plan. And then this, um, you know, putting in kind of how, whatever, our current practice, um, is, is sort of a, okay, let's, let's try this and see how that goes, you know, and maybe, maybe we'll try something else. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm neutral on our current practice. I, I think it's, it helps us be mindful of what we're doing right and how it relates to the strategic plan.
I, I will say I'm neutral also. From my perspective, it's been helpful just as a, okay, I keep seeing certain goals and maybe not other ones, um, so it just, it's a kind of, as a check and balance. I have used it in that way, but I, I can't say I feel strongly one way or the other.
I like it, but it's not a hill I would die on.
I, I think John, John's point about continuing to think of items we've put on the agenda and how they move forward the strategic plan, but this particular way of addressing it, I don't think that, that would die.
Seems like it's more of a assessment after a chunk of time to see how many times we're discussing a certain goal. I don't know.
And it, and it's at the very high-level definition of the goal. It's not at the, we don't have them completely yet, but the KPI level, so saying that we're, well, like this today, you know, Atlantic Research is goal one, that actually doesn't, I mean, reevaluating our, our special ed program is not actually one of the KPIs or, or action items. So it, it kind of fits there, but it doesn't really. So I, I think it's unnecessary to have that, that thing, but I think it would be good to continue to look at how we're focusing the, the meetings on the, the strategic plan.
I know you had thoughts about this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it adds clutter, but if other people find it of value, you know, I just didn't want us to end up doing it just because we said we were going to try it, and then it just continued, you know? But if Ms. Stone finds it of value-
I'd just like to stay out of the weeds, across the board.
Yeah, and I think, I thought you, you had said last time that you thought it was helpful. It works for me. I, so I think we'll continue for now, and let's, you know, discuss it again, and just continue noticing what we're discussing, what we're not, and if that impacts our agenda building in a larger sense.
I think to John's point, as the board continues to evaluate its practices, um, there may be a time where you wish to reconsider how those committees are organized, and I think that's kind of what John is pointing to. Certainly now is not the time to definitively do that, but as we get into the summer and look to next year, and we're reorganizing ourselves around the strategic plan, that may be something we want to spend more time talking about, or at a future board self-evaluation, that may be a good topic to consider as well. Thank you.
Great. Any other old business? New business?
I have new, I think new. Old, but new again. Um, I had a constituent ask me about, uh, our lunch program, because it was so excellent in the past with the hot lunches, and I told him I had no idea what was happening, but I assumed something was happening.
Well, I'm so glad you asked that question, because in fact, um, today is the day that we're implementing a return to loosening restrictions on our lunchtime protocol.
Yeah.
And so remember that we, um, in the late fall, transitioned to increased distancing, so that's six feet between all of our students when they were in unmasked times at lunch. And so that, uh, caused us to prolong or perpetuate kind of the modified lunch offerings and the way in which kids approach the lunch line and get their food and all of that. And so, um, today's transition back to starting to loosen some of those restrictions will allow us to again look at how we can provide and, and return to some of those hot lunch offerings. When students are located in a variety of places in order to increase distancing, it really needed to be a meal that was able to be packaged and transported. If you can envision a hot lunch line at, say, WJHS, that involves a whole lot of close proximity of a whole lot of people for some length of time while they're standing in line and getting their food, and all of that is way too much congregating for the pandemic environment. And so as we start to loosen our restrictions, we will start to be able to offer, um, a, a greater variety in hot lunch offerings. So we're moving in that direction. I wouldn't get too excited that that's going to happen in this school year, but as we look toward, uh, menu building for next school year, I think we'll be much closer to what, uh, we have historically experienced in our district, which is just a fantastic hot lunch program that is very popular among many people. So, thanks for asking the question today. Mark's another step in that direction, but we're not, um, we're not quite there yet. Meals still need to be transported, and really through the end of the school year, we will continue, or at least we expect to continue to have outdoor lunch options when the weather allows it. Throughout the winter, we weren't able to do that, um, but I was just seeing some notes this morning already that, um, some of our people who monitor what's happening with lunch are starting to predict that maybe by the end of the week, we'll be able to do some outdoor lunch if the grounds dry up. So, yeah, you know, we, we like, we really have liked the outdoor lunch in many ways, and yet it does require some changes in protocol and changes in how we offer, uh, lunch and organize kids and staff. So we're moving in that direction, but probably the full menu will be, uh, not available until next year, so. Thanks for the compliments, though, of our lunch program.
Yeah, I, I gotta say, I mean, one of the real treasures in my memory is a shot one of my daughters was when I came to help with lunch one day. So fun.
Yes, well, it, you know, the-
Is that still a thing?
It, it will still be a thing. We still have some restrictions on, uh, visitors and, um, helpers during the school day. I think that is step three or four on our off-ramp, where we start to reduce those restrictions, and so then we can have some additional opportunities. We do have some parents who come in to help during lunchtime, but, um, it's, it's pretty limited right now. It's not as it used to be, which I think was more on like a volunteer basis. If you want to come in and help one day, you can, you can just come in. It's, it's really restricted to the essential supports that are needed for lunch protocol. So.
Welcome. Any other new business?
I'll take a minute just to acknowledge, Erin always brings so much color to our meetings, and I appreciate the, the commentary you offer, but today you are bringing a lot of color in representing not only St. Patrick's Day, but I think under your St. Patrick's Day jacket, you have a University of Illinois-
I do.
-celebration, just, I think, because they're entering the dance. I should have worn my Loyola shirt.
There's no guarantee next Monday we'll still be in it.
Yeah.
After last Friday's debacle. I also have on pie earrings for Pi Day.
Oh, my goodness! Please, just, I forgot. You are just representing it all.
Got to, got to gear up before the Ides of March tomorrow, because you got to be where?
Well, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for that added color. I appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel and collective negotiating matters.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Fanzika?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, we are now adjourned to executive session. The time is 10:06, and I would suggest we take a quick five-minute break.
Appreciate that suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Be right back.